Well, while I can, I'd like to call this meeting the regular meeting of the New Hanover County Board of Education to order. Please stand for our invocation, remain standing for our pledge of allegiance and national anthem.
Board, we thank you for this day, this opportunity to come together. We ask your guidance in all that takes place here tonight. We ask your protection and guidance on all those that service, not only here locally, but around the world tonight. Be with us in all decisions that are made, provide us with wisdom and guidance and make us ever mindful of the needs of others. In your holy name we pray, amen.
The audience may have a seat, please. If we could get the names and school and grade of our performers.
Can they do an encore, do Christmas carols or something?
It was beautiful.
My name is Berkeley Lindley from Anderson Elementary School and I'm in fifth grade.
Is the microphone on?
My name is Berkeley Lindley from Anderson Elementary and I'm in fifth grade.
Hi, my name is Kira Paget and I'm from Ogden Elementary and I'm in fifth grade.
My name is Mia Kelly from Ogden Elementary School and I'm in fifth grade.
My name is Logan Hewitt from Eaton Elementary School and I'm in fifth grade.
My name is Avery Damron from Eaton Elementary School and I'm in fourth grade.
You gotta do it like an ice cream cone.
Gotta do it up here like an ice cream cone.
My name is Berkeley Lindley from Anderson Elementary School and I'm in fifth grade.
Hi, my name is Kira Paget from Ogden Elementary School and I'm in fifth grade.
My name is Mia Kelly from Ogden Elementary School and I'm in fifth grade.
My name is Logan Hewitt from Eaton Elementary School and I'm in fifth grade.
My name is Avery Damron from Eaton Elementary School and I'm in fourth grade.
My name is Mia Rose from Eaton Elementary School and I'm in fourth grade.
My name is Kaylee Pettigrew from Ogden Elementary School and I'm in fourth grade.
My name is Ava Salerno from Pine Valley Elementary School and I'm in fourth grade.
My name is Leila Klein from Forest Hills Global Elementary School and I'm in fifth grade.
My name is Maddie Thompson from Pine Valley Elementary School and I'm in fifth grade.
My name is Minnie Walker from Eaton Elementary School and I'm in fifth grade.
My name is Emma Kate Ellis from Eaton Elementary School and I'm in fifth grade.
My name is Ruby Gorman and I'm from Holly Tree Elementary School and I'm in the fifth grade.
My name is Tyler Neese, I'm at Ogden Elementary School and I'm in fifth grade.
My name is Aleah Marshall, I go to Bellamy Elementary and I'm in fifth grade.
My name is Georgia Boyett, I go to Bellamy Elementary and I'm in fifth grade.
My name is Cadet Seaman Recruit Mullin and I'm from Eugene Ashley High School, ninth grade.
I'm Cadet Petty Officer Second Class Bennett, I'm in 10th grade.
I'm Cadet Seaman Apprentice Downey and I'm in ninth grade.
I'm Cadet Petty Officer Third Class Joshua Sinikowski from 10th grade from Eugene Ashley High School.
I'm the music teacher at Anderson Elementary, my name is Jeremy Matthews. And this is a group of students that auditioned for a state chorus and they're performing in Winston-Salem this weekend. So they're from different schools and these are the other music teachers.
Susan Gardner from Holly Tree Elementary.
Carly Cansler, Eaton Elementary.
Jasmine Sutton, Forest Hills Global Elementary.
Emily Probst, Bellamy.
Victoria Everts, Pine Valley.
Lynn Stemke at Ogden Elementary.
There are 190 children selected for this choir and New Hanover County has 17 of them. So a little bit, one out of every 11 in the state or 11 and 11 and a half are coming from New Hanover County schools out of 110 school systems, so we're rocking it out, guys. Give them another round of applause.
I'm like Mrs. Z Step, I was ready for an encore there, it's some other singing. And I'll just say this, we're very proud of the arts program in our New Hanover County school system and this is just one small example. If you've never attended Best Foot Forward and some of the other activities that take place, because I'm constantly amazed when I hear from other counties and talking with board members around the state, what their systems do not offer that we offer. And it's only through a joint venture of taxpayers really that provide the funds, because we have the dedicated professionals to do this. And also the cooperation with the county commissioners, which is very important because we receive funding from the state, but a lot of the things that we're able to do in this county, and I think our cultural arts department is one that we don't cut as many systems do when there's a shortage or whatever, that's one of the first places they cut, we don't do that. And I think with the cooperation of the county commissioners, we've been able to grow our programs because it's through the additional funding that comes locally, not from the state, that we're able to do a lot of this. And any other board members want to say along those lines?
Amen.
But you really did a terrific job and we appreciate you being here. Yeah, we'll get back to you in just a second. Ms. Adams, would you call the roll, please?
Donald S. Page.
Here.
Janice S. Smith. Janice A. Channell.
Here.
Kami J. Coben.
Here.
Lisa Isa.
Here.
Edgar B. Higgins. T. Shaw.
Thank you, item two, approval of the agenda, any additions or deletions to the agenda?
None.
Move for approval.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's approved. Item three, approval of minutes. Item A, our special meeting, October 13th, 2015.
Move for approval.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's approved. Item B, our work session minutes from October 20th, 2015.
Move for approval, second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, they are approved. Item four is recognition of achievement.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for raving this weather to be with us. Our first recognition for the evening is these wonderful young people that we just saw who sang for us. They were selected to be a part of the 2015 North Carolina Elementary Honors Chorus, which is sponsored by the State's Music Educators Association. Each student went through a rigorous audition before being selected to be a part of this prestigious 200-voice chorus. As Mr. McCoy told us, they'll be performing in Winston-Salem this weekend. So I will call each of you up by name and ask that your music teachers then come up and have a photo with you with Mr. Hayes. So first, from Anderson Elementary, Berkeley Lindley. And the music teacher is Mr. Jeremy Matthews. Okay, from Bellamy, we have Georgia Boyett and Aleah Marshall and their music teacher, Ms. Emily Probst. Okay, we have five students from Eaton under the direction of Ms. Carly Cansler. If Ms. Cansler would come forward. First, we have Amory Avery Damron. Emma Kate Ellis. If you all would come in front of the podium. Logan Hewitt. Mia Rose. And Jasmine Walker, all from Eaton Elementary. Okay, all the Eaton students come back. Don't they look beautiful in their red? Okay, next we have our students from Forest Hills. Leila Klein and her music teacher is Jasmine Sutton. From Holly Tree, we have Ruby Gorman and the music teacher is Ms. Susan Garner. We have four from Ogden under the music teacher Lynn Stemke. And the students are Mia Kelly, Tyler Neese, Kira Paget, and Kaylee Pettigrew. And our last group is from Pine Valley. We have Ava Salerno and Maddie Thompson and their music teacher, Ms. Vicki Stone. Okay, now, I think we want a group picture. If you all could come together. Parents, feel free to come forward. And may we have all of the parents and principals of these outstanding students to please stand. We'd like to recognize you. To our young people, you make us so proud and we wish you so much luck this weekend in Winston-Salem. Thank you for being an outstanding example of New Hanover County schools. Thank you. Oh, you're welcome. They have good manners, they said thank you. You're welcome. Thank you. Should I go on? Thank you. Bye-bye, thank you. I said it before they all left. Okay, our next recognition for this evening is of Ms. Kelly Crowley. Kelly's a third grade teacher at Pine Valley Elementary School and she's been named the 2015 STEM Educator of the Year by Corning and Wilmington Business Development. This award recognizes Ms. Crowley's innovation and success in bringing STEM education to her students. Is Ms. Crowley here? Yes. So if Ms. Higgins, Op Grand and any other Pine Valley staffer here, if you'd like to stand, I know you all are proud. Congratulations. Our next recognition is of a young lady by the name of Ellie Kinsey. Ellie is currently a freshman at Ashley High School and she was selected as one of 30 finalists in the 5th Annual National Broad Cam Masters Middle School Competition for her eighth grade science fair, which she called Water Pollution and the Eastern Oyster. How smart is that? Ellie, would you please come forward to be recognized? Oh, there she is. If Ellie's family is here or her school, would you please stand? Congratulations. Congratulations on your brilliant daughter. And next, we will recognize two Riceboro Elementary students whose artwork won the Professional Educators of North Carolina Young Artists Competition Award. And the two students are Lillian Tev Teller, who's a fifth grade student, and Diana Ramirez Roblero, who's a third grade student. And we have their artwork here to display. The lighthouse was created by Lillian and Diana created the pumpkin. They are beautiful. Are these young ladies here? And if their art teacher, Ms. Browen Guthrie is here, would you please come forward, Ms. Guthrie? Principal Bonnie Hall and the girls' families, would you please stand so we could recognize you? Thank you so much. And our final recognition for this evening is for our very own Forest Hills Global Elementary School. Forest Hills has received the 2015 National Healthy Schools Bronze Award for leading comprehensive health, physical activity, and wellness efforts during the 2014-15 school year. And to earn this award, Forest Hills had to improve its nutrition and wellness services and physical activities programs to meet or exceed stringent standards set by the Alliance for a Healthier Generation's Healthy Schools Program. So, if Principal Greenwood is here. There she is. Congratulations. And finally, we will have a representative from Hourglass Studios to make a special gift presentation to our band program. I'm going to ask Mr. McCoy to come up. I think this is the second month in a row he's gotten money, there's something going on.
My name's Trent Harrison and I own and operate Hourglass Studios. And we've been very successful over the past three years and wanted to give back a little bit to the local music community. In September, we had a fundraising event at a local venue downtown with eight of the bands that we've recorded over the past couple of years to raise money for local music education. And during that event, we raised $1,225 to give back.
This is an arts community. If you go down anywhere, you see theaters, you see venues, you see things. And it's people like us that allow our little kids to have hope to be able to do this professionally. And he's recording, we use JK a lot, a lot of people help us out. So we appreciate everything you do as New Hanover County Schools and our band program for the fundraiser, but mostly just for your support all the time. Thank you so very much. She wants a picture.
That concludes our program, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Quatabon. Next item on the agenda is our call to the audience relating to agenda items. Please remember that we have a three-minute time limit. The first speaker is Anna Lee.
Is there anything I could go to the end of the list?
There's only two people, yes, that's fine.
Would that be okay?
Well, let's see.
No, 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 I just want to move to the...
Sure, Amanda...
Go ahead of me until my husband...
Boomer Shyne?
Sorry, childcare mishaps.
Hi. So, good evening, members of the school board, Superintendent Markley, administration and staff. My name's Amanda Boomer Shyne and I have two children and the Spanish immersion program at Forest Hills. And when I spoke to you in the September meeting, I asked you to consider developing a plan to deal with the overcrowding that is occurring in some New Hanover County schools. And I have to say, I was pleasantly surprised when I learned about the proposal to move the language program from Forest Hills to create a K-8 language magnet school, thereby expanding the program and making it available to many more students in the county, while at the same time dealing with the overcrowding at Forest Hills, so thank you. I understand that as part of the failing schools proposal, this is kind of integrated into that as far as moving that to Gregory, which Gregory is one of the six schools in New Hanover County that is having some issues with performance. And so I wanted to, I'm here tonight to ask you to support the expansion of the language program and to encourage you to first have a good understanding of the program before voting on it in December. I would like to use the remainder of my time to address some of the concerns that I have outlined to you previously by email. First, I wanted to let you know that I'm approaching this discussion from several points of view. As a Spanish professor who teaches courses on linguistics and language acquisition and pedagogy, also as a professor who teaches students who have attended Spanish immersion programs, similar to the one that you're proposing in Greensboro, and they are performing at the college level with near-native competency in Spanish, as a linguist who conducts research on acquisition and maintenance of Spanish and English by heritage speakers of Spanish, and also as a mother of children in the program. So my primary concern is that the immersion program will be moving from one segregated school to another segregated school. My understanding of the proposed program is that Hispanic children will be in separate classes from non-Hispanic children and that they will not be integrated until second grade. Aside from the legal and moral implications of this proposal, this is not a practice that is accepted in the dual-language community. The non-Spanish-speaking children and the Spanish-speaking children need to be together from day one so that there can be cultural and linguistic exchange in both languages on a daily basis. This way, both groups of children are learning from and with each other. Thank you. Helping them to become linguistically and culturally competent bilingual and bilinguine global citizens. My second concern, and I'll stop after that, is that the proposal is being developed without the input and guidance of the community, the parents, the teachers, and the leaders in the field of dual-language education. I understand that the details will be worked out once the proposal is approved, but I feel that the proposal must first be complete before you all can be reasonably asked to vote on something, especially something, thank you, that has the potential to improve the education of so many, including those students at Gregory, and make New Hanover County a leader for other districts in the region. In closing, I applaud New Hanover County Schools for being brave enough to envision a K-8 Language Magnet School, but I caution you against voting for something that is not fully developed or understood. Can we not take a little bit more time and work together with those who have great ideas based on research and best practices rather than pushing through a proposal that may result in the demise of a successful language immersion program? Thank you for your time this evening and your dedication to the education of tomorrow's global leaders. And I'm sorry I went over a little bit. Thank you.
Anna, excuse me, Anna Lee?
How are y'all this evening? So, my name is Anna Lee, and I am a parent of a kindergarten immersion student at Forest Hills, and also come from a family that's already bilingual and bicultural. And for that, I'm incredibly, because of that, I'm incredibly grateful that this program exists currently at Forest Hills, and am eager for it to exist in a form that will serve more children, especially more children from different races, ethnicities, and language backgrounds. So, I want to echo what Amanda said, and thank you for envisioning this idea to expand the program. I'm also very much involved in the community and an advocate for all children and equity in education. And because of that, I've had the privilege to get to know many of the Gregory parents who I've heard many of them say are delighted at the idea of language and think that kids learning language is really important, but have a lot of what I think are very valid concerns about the fact that as the program expands to Gregory with the plan as I understand it now, that it wouldn't be able to serve their children who are there now. It would start serving kids in kindergarten. So, and I understand that and honor that. And so, I've been thinking a lot about how, what can we do that would make sure those parents' concerns are heard and also embrace this opportunity to expand the program? So, if you'll bear with me for one second, I just wanted to offer some suggestions that I'll follow up with in writing, but as a possibility to make sure that this program is equitable and accessible and also, as I said, really honors everybody's needs. So, here's some ideas. That you should move, move the immersion dual-language program to Gregory in the next year. But make sure, number one, that there is one track for all students who are coming to immersion. Right now, I understand it's supposed to be divided between a 50-50 model and a 90-10 model, and with students potentially being tracked into that by their language. And that is not good. And we should have one model and all students into that model. I'm also suggesting that you continue STEM. Okay, thanks. At Gregory. And as you phase in immersion, keep STEM in place until immersion is fully phased in so that the parents who are at Gregory now get what they signed up for. Also suggesting that you provide, as Gregory parents have asked for, a language program for the kids who will not be able to be in dual-language immersion. I also ask that you address the concerns of Gregory staff in this time of transition and consider them. And I know my time's up. So, I just also please echo Amanda's statements about, make sure you have a real plan in place and that you get the input of people now, not after you've taken a vote. Thank you.
Thank you. It is. This is... Something different. Okay, next item, item six. Administrative personnel. Item A, administrative recommendation. Appendix A, Dr. Markley.
All right. We have three recommendations. Two of them are for temporary positions. But the first one is from Ms. Colleen Pate. She is currently the career development facilitator at Laney, and we are recommending her to be the program coordinator at Isaac Bear Early College. She previously worked at Isaac Bear as a counselor, and so she'll be going back to Isaac Bear. Before that, she worked at Pender Early College and Heidi Trasp. Ms. Pate received her master's degree and bachelor's degree, both from Western Michigan University and Kalamazoo. Had asked for board approval.
Comments, questions? All those favor, please say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Approved.
Is Ms. Pate here? Second recommendation is, seems like I bring this name back every year for a couple of weeks. And this is Ms. Matilda Gurley. She'll serve as an interim assistant principal at New Hanover to cover a maternity leave. As you know, she's retired, but has been the principal at Isaac Bear Early College previously, and has served in an interposition twice in the last two years.
Comments, questions? All those favor, please say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Approved.
Third recommendation, again, is an interim principal recommendation for Alderman, and I'm recommending Monica Goza. Monica will serve as the, from November 16th to December 18th for about one month while the principal has a medical procedure. Previously been the principal at Winter Park. She's served as a counselor, observer evaluator, supervisor, assistant principal at Alderman in the past, as well as principal at Riceboro Elementary.
Comments, questions? All those favor, please say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Approved.
That concludes...
Thank you. Item seven, Head Start. Head Start liaison report.
Number two Higgins this month, so we'll defer to Mr. Smith.
Mr. Smith?
Head Start updates?
You're not cruising like...
No, and I'm sure that I will not do justice to this as Mr. Higgins would. But I do want to share with you just a few updates. We are offering for the first time this year multi-age classrooms as a part of our Head Start programming, and we're already seeing the benefits from children learning both from the different age groups. The children are providing role models. The older children are providing role models for the younger children. And this allows them to practice and demonstrate the skills that the teachers are teaching. Additionally, program governance training has, all of our board members have received that required training. So, that has been completed. And we are still waiting for the results of our spring environmental health and safety review. And we will share that information once it's received. And then finally, we had a recent childcare licensing compliance visit, and we scored an A on our facility inspection. So, thank you very much.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Are all of the classes multi-age, or is it just a few of them, or what?
All of the Head Start classrooms are multi-age. We serve three-year-olds and four-year-olds. And last year, the model was to have those children separate. But there were some additional challenges with our three-year-olds because they didn't have the four-year-olds to model. You probably wouldn't think that there would be a huge difference between the behaviors of three and four-year-olds, but there are. And so, by creating these multi-age classrooms, they are being given role models, and we're able to demonstrate, they're able to better learn and demonstrate those skills.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead, Michelle.
The dental mobile, it goes to Johnson. Is it able to hook up and access the Johnson?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the first part.
The dental mobile.
The dental mobile. Is it able to hook up and access? I'm not sure specifically about that. But we are providing that service to those children. So, if they're not able to hook up at Johnson, then we will transport them to the site where they are able to receive that service. But I, yes?
Cover some to try to get them available. We didn't actually talk about that.
We can make it, we've made it available, the hookup available at several different schools. Whenever the dental trailer lets us know where their location is going to be, we usually provide a hookup. Takes electrical and water hookup for that. And once in a while, we'll run into some problematic, you know, problems with it, but usually it's not that problematic, and we can hook it up. We'll make that available when they're ready to go out there. We'll look at it, hook it up, and if not, transport them to the appropriate site if it's impossible. But I doubt it will be. We haven't had a problem.
And I'll follow up with Mr. Han.
You have a question? Thank you, Dr. Smith. Item B, expenditure report. Appendix C.
Yes. You have available in the attachment, the monthly expenditure report for Head Start. There's not anything specific that we need to report from this. But glad to answer any questions you may have.
Question?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Item A, information. Item A, classified employees serving as bus drivers. Appendix B, Dr. Wilmers.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. As you're aware, probably from phone calls and from a lot of other things, every now and then, we have a shortage of drivers, and that creates a significant problem for the school system. In this past year, Dr. Markley asked several of us to get together, Mr. Nance and some transportation, and some HR folks, and Mary Hazel, and look at different ways that we might be able to increase our pool of bus drivers, knowing that it's kind of hard to do that when you go outside of the system because you have to, one, recruit. They have to meet our safety requirements and all of our state requirements. Then they have to go through the class, through the training. It's an involved situation. And we'll often have classes of 25 people and get three bus drivers out of that class. So, we kind of put our heads together to come up with a plan that we think may help, and we'd like to show that to you. The main goal is to safely and efficiently, you know, get our kids home and back to school on a daily basis. One of the main reasons we're not doing that, and there's always something, there can be emergencies, but it's inconsistency with bus schedule because we don't have enough drivers. So, the driver, a new driver, may take over a run and not know exactly how that run goes. So, that throws the time off. The inconsistency in knowing the routes because a new sub, when Ken has six to 10 drivers out, he puts subs in, and it may be on a route that they've never driven before. And they have guidance and ways to do that, but it's still, if you're not familiar with it, it can be a little bit of a challenge to drive a big yellow bus around it. And then, the inconsistency with drivers not knowing they're students. A sub gets on a bus, he's not aware of what student might present a challenge, what student needs to be watched, what student needs to be told to kind of keep an eye on so there's not trouble. It's not all just us. I was in Baltimore visiting my son, and as he was taking us to the airport, Baltimore is full of big billboards. And I kept noticing a pattern. So, I whipped out my phone like a millennial would do and took a picture. And as you can see, they're looking for them too. It's a national crisis. And a lot of systems have gotten to the point where they can't run routes because they don't have enough bus drivers. Knoxville, Tennessee, my hometown, actually did away with it for about a week because they did not have enough people to run the routes, and everybody had to make their own way to school. The program goal is to implement a plan designed to increase the bus drivers pool. What we want to do is offer part-time child nutrition employees, part-time custodians, and currently-employed teacher assistants an opportunity to apply for the additional position of a bus driver. And teacher assistants hired starting with the 2016-17 school year, this is next year, would be required to either be licensed to drive a bus or be eligible to become licensed to be a bus driver. Now, many counties across the states, TAs have always been, I've worked in Carteret County, and it was that way there. The teacher assistants were their bus drivers. And so, they have a split day where typically they're working six to five hours in the classroom, and then one to two hours in the morning and one to two hours in the afternoon. And what we're saying is we'd like to look at all the new folks coming in next year. We don't know where the budget will be, we don't know the numbers that we're looking at, but we think we'll be hiring and have them also do that role and drive during the day. We've got a way to do that, too. If you're a teacher assistant, you're applying for the position of the bus driver. If you're currently employed in regular classroom now, we're saying regular classroom teacher assistants. You, they can be a bus driver if they're eligible for employment. They're getting their North Carolina Commercial Driver's License. They would go through the same program that folks were hiring today as bus drivers. They possess a valid North Carolina Driver's License, and they meet all the North Carolina Department's physical and legal requirements. And as you know, there are new physical requirements that are going to come onboard sometime soon. We're kind of waiting to see where that goes. To be a teacher assistant bus driver, a teacher assistant would work normally six hours in the regular classroom during the day, and they would work two hours as a bus driver. Now, what we're planning on doing is they would only run one route. So, they would either run the morning route or the afternoon route, and another individual at that school would do the opposite. Because that way, we're not taking them out of the classroom for that big a period of time. They're still getting the time in as a bus driver, and we cover our bus drivers, so...
Now, John? We pay our bus driver, we pay our bus drivers out of transportation dollars. So, we'd be paying six hours out of teacher assistant allotment, two hours out of bus driver allotment. So, we're actually getting two hours of teacher assistant time that if we string enough of these together, we can, we could get more teacher assistance.
The only situation that would be a problem there is, I'm going to show you in a minute, that we would pay them at their current level of years of experience as a bus driver. It is possible that some of the younger TAs who are applying for this would lose money because they would be at a lower level on the bus driver scale. And we would work individually with that to make sure they're not losing money and the possibility that they would gain money into the future. Now, this is a big one, and this has to be understood because this is going to make a big change. All teacher assistant positions would be reclassified from salary to hourly. In other words, right now, we're paying ahead, we pay a salary on a teacher assistant, like we do a teacher. But what this would do was with next year, they would move to an hourly basis. If we're keeping time on what you work as a teacher assistant and what you work as a bus driver, we've got to break that into an hourly rate. And the only way we can do that is to pay on an hourly basis.
What are the positives and the negatives to that?
Mary Hazel, would you like to answer that?
I think the most significant positive is that our hourly employees get paid twice a month. So, several years ago, we switched to that for our, all of our part-time employees, cafeteria workers and custodians, and that's worked out real well for them because with hourly, we pull it in two times a month, so they get paid more often. The transition is a difficulty because right now, with teacher assistants on the same schedule as teachers, they get that, a full check in August, just like teachers do because they're paid on that state prepaid schedule. So, once we switch them to hourly, we have to pull the hours in and pay them. So, they would, their pay schedule would shift by two weeks, but then they'll start getting paid every two weeks. So, when we switched the other folks to that several years ago, it was very positive.
But what about the bottom-line dollars?
It's the same salary. So, as long as you're working full hours. And for most people, Dr. Wilmers alluded to that, most people would make a little bit more as a bus driver, so that's kind of an incentive. So, at two hours a day, you'd be paid at a higher rate. And if there's any overtime, it would be prorated based on both rates. So, there's a possibility, depending on the day and the route, that they could make a little extra money.
John, one of your bullets up here was familiarity with the students or the people riding the bus. How do you, how do you, how do you deal with that if they're only driving one time a day?
Well, keep in mind that they're in the school all day. So, they're not just knowing the kids that are on their one bus route. They know the school, the kids from the school. I can tell you in Carteret, where we had this, that was, that was the strength of the program. The kids knew their bus driver, the bus driver knew their kids, knew their families. They pretty well knew their history. And it takes a while to build that up. That wouldn't happen overnight. But that familiarity... That wouldn't happen overnight, but that familiarity really helps. And when they know the parent that well, when they get to that stop and need to say, "Well, Don was acting up on the bus today like he always does, and I need to tell his mom", it's, it makes it a lot easier. So the familiarity comes from being in the school with the kids.
Notice he picked me to?
Yes.
Well, I mean, you're going to give realistic examples. You've just got to.
Now, one thing to consider, if you're using TAs as drivers, Bill, we'd be parking some of these buses at schools, correct?
That's correct. Buses would be parked at schools so they wouldn't have to go to the bus garage, pick up the bus, and just drive to the school and pick it up and be there at night.
So it would be stay there at night also?
Yes, it would stay there at night. And it would just come, pick it up in the morning, and then whichever kid, drive the morning route, drive the morning route, and the other one would be out.
Couldn't that cause problems with security?
I'm sorry?
Couldn't that cause problems with security? Because I thought we had, at the bus lots, we had better security than we do at the schools.
We did, and we're not, because there's a big security at the school, like we have at the bus lot. But we just have to see at various schools, if there is an issue with security, then we have to deal with it at times, depending on what it is. We've tried that in a couple of places, a couple of locations, and we have a lot of experience. We keep about twenty buses at rural roads.
See, this is a higher, bus drivers, a higher rate of pay than in the United States.
But there are places where we do.
Plus, for some of our partners, you could put them in the map.
And Dr. Wellmers, suppose we have someone who wants to be a teacher assistant but would not be comfortable in driving the bus at all. And that person really has credentials and would be a plus to the school, but we would, the new hires would have to say, "You have to drive that bus"?
That's just about it. Yes, ma'am. If if there are reasons that I'm going to go over in a minute about why you wouldn't have to do this, sort of some exemptions, but for the most part, you would be required to drive a bus. And and I lived through that the ten years I was in Carteret and had that situation and had a lot of tears and a lot of, "I want to be in the school, but I can't drive a bus", and my my wife learned to drive a bus and even kept the mirrors on it in her in her test driving. One of her friends wasn't quite that lucky.
You do know that this is televised, don't you?
Yes, that's right, and she knows anyway, so. But she learned, and so it it really isn't as bad as it sounds, and most people do get through it, and a lot of folks enjoy it. It actually becomes a positive, a plus. It takes a while. It becomes into a, in part of the school culture.
Well, for many years, it it got to the point of, with coaches not being able to drive activity buses, it was a requirement that the coach, you had to, and then also, with new teachers being hired, it was written into the contract that it called upon, you know, you would coach, which also meant driving a bus.
We've come a long way since students driving.
Yes.
No, this wasn't student driver, these were teachers.
I know.
Yeah.
Yeah, when we had sixteen-year-olds driving, sixteen-year-olds.
Sixteen-year-olds, yeah. Okay. Part-time child nutrition employees, this, I think this is going to be a real plus for them. Obviously, they have to meet the bus driver requirements the same way. They're already working for us in 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 child nutrition. They'd work three and a half hours in child nutrition at a school and drive a bus for no more than four and a half hours. Now, with them, that would be different than a teacher assistant, and it is possible they might drive a morning and afternoon route. But we, that's something that Ken would need to work out with his his folks to see how that's going to fall out. But I'll show you in a minute why this is a good thing for them, but that it it could work out. Part-time custodians, right now, we have a lot of part-time custodian positions, which are four-hour positions. So what we're looking at is a possibility that the part-time custodian, either who works in the morning or in the afternoon, would make that morning or afternoon route. Typically, they'd work four hours in the school and four hours on the bus. What's the incentives? Why, why do this? I mean, if you're currently working in the school system, why would you want to? We will pay all the licensure fees that are incurred by these folks getting their bus license. Ken, what would that be, about a hundred, about eighty dollars, hundreds?
It was grand, maybe ninety-five.
Ninety-five.
Early, it was about seventy-five, eighty.
Okay, and the renewal, so we would cover that for them. We would pay employees for hours driving a bus on their pay scale equal to they, to where they are in their current pay scale. So we would go to the bus driver range, and so they're not starting at zero on bus driver and ten on on their other position. The part-time custodians and child nutrition employees, and I think this is really important, who work a combined total of thirty hours or more per week would now be eligible for a full benefits package. That's a very strong incentive right there. Teacher assistants who obtain their CDL or are given, will be given priority status if we have a RIT. So if we once again have to take a pool of our TA assistants and look at, at, you know, last in, first out, what we're going to do is make the bus drivers a priority. They won't be impacted by that list. They will be moved up regardless of the number of years they have in the system. They'll usually work their regular teaching assistant position for six hours and then drive either the morning or afternoon route. So they're not tied into two where they have to get up at five and get home at seven. And as Bill said, the buses will be located as best we can at the school, and that way, they don't have to travel to get to the bus. Anyone who, in this program, who's currently on any type of improvement plan or is working in a substandard way that's measured by their supervisor would not be eligible for this plan. Now, once they work off that plan and were successful, then they would be. Okay, now we go to next year, and this is where, as you pointed out, this is where everybody we hire would be required to either have the CDL, which most won't, or be working towards it. And Ken would be setting classes up for them, we would be working with them to get that CDL. And and we look at ninety days for them to get into the class is what we're looking at. Because it takes time, and we know they can't. They don't have control of that. The exemptions, teacher assistants who will not be required to meet this would be, number one, their employment date is earlier than now, in other words, next year that starts next year. The second is they hold a clear North Carolina teaching license in any area. Now, we have quite a few TAs who have a teacher's license, and that road typically is running two ways. First of all, they were a teacher for many years, and they got tired of being the head of the class and the stress that goes along with it. But they don't want to be away from kids, so what we do is we transition them into a teacher assistant position. Because they hold that license, we would not require them to get the bus driver's license. Then teacher, then we have a lot of young teachers who couldn't get a teaching position because we don't have that many, and so they took a job as a teacher assistant to get their foot in the door. We don't want to train them and put the time and hours and money into getting them licensed to drive a bus. And then six months later, they're hired because teachers left us. So those folks would be in in more or less a protected class. A special ed teacher has requirements that are put on them by the IEP, and so those folks would not be required to. If they wanted to, and the IEP requirements were not such that we had to, we could look at that possibility, but probably not. And if they're hired in a temporary or a time certain position, we still have federal funds that create time certain or temporary positions through the school year. Once again, those would be folks that we train, and then we lose. So we would not require them. If a, if someone went for a job, some, if, we'll pick on Don again. Let's just say that that Don decided he wanted, he was, right now, he's a part-time custodian. He goes through the process, he gets his CDL, he works for us for two years, and he hurts his leg in a hunting accident. And so he now can't drive a bus anymore. He will not lose his regular position because he can no longer drive a bus. We want to ensure that people don't think that if something happens, that they can't anymore, that they lose their job with the school system. And that's it. There's our buses.
This is provided as information. It'll be on the December board meeting for approval. So if you've got questions now, or if you think of some after, please let us know.
Bruce, looks like you have a question.
Body language told on me. One of the observations I I've had with the state of North Carolina's last two budgets is an ongoing fight over whether to fund teacher assistance. And we were very fortunate this year that the House prevailed over the Senate to do that. What do you do with this plan if the state, through some draconian move, eliminates funding for teacher assistance?
I think we will still have some teacher assistance, even if the state makes the draconian cut. But it will hurt this plan, no doubt about it. I mean, as far as the teacher assistant, as the bus driver goes, it it will, and it, I can tell you that it will hurt us, it will devastate other counties where they rely on their TAs every day as their bus driver. But it will hurt us, no doubt, many, many ways, but that would be a big one.
There's a lot of other counties, I would imagine, that are already, they have programs like this in place where they use custodians and and so forth.
Yes, sir. I I did this in Carteret County for the ten years I was there. It was already there when I got there. And it was, I'll tell you, the safety record, the the knowledge of the students, the knowledge of the routes, this being embedded in a school, made it a very strong program. And I really appreciate Mr. Nance and Deb Trant in my office for working on this, and I think it's a pretty solid.
You think this sort of will eliminate the problem, I mean, the shortage?
I don't know that it'll, I've talked to Ken about that, and he said he, it it seems like no matter what we do, we always have four or five buses that are short, so I don't know. But I think it'll go a long way to solving it.
I would think so.
But it does give you, even if these folks don't drive a regular route, it gives you a bigger pool of potential substitute drivers. Also, if you've got a a field trip and you've got a TA who's certified to drive, that gives you somebody who can drive on that field trip if you can't find a regular bus driver.
All right.
Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you, Dr. Wellmers. Thank you, appreciate it. Next item, item B, installation of cameras on yellow school buses, appendix C.
Well, Mr. Han's is coming forward. This you will see later tonight as a budget amendment, so we wanted to make sure you were fully briefed as we head into that.
As you know, we have cameras on some of our buses, approximately thirty-four of our buses have cameras. We've experimented over the years with one-camera systems, two-camera systems, three-camera systems, and you just don't get all the coverage that you need. Some, there are always dead spots within the bus. A four-camera system, such as is depicted here, is the only way to go in order to have full coverage within the bus. And this doesn't cover outside the bus, it's inside the bus. It covers the students and the driver and the door getting off. But it's not the outside stop arm coverage at all. This is inside the bus. And this will bring us about a hundred and thirty-five additional cameras. We will put out a solicitation for this and bring back a bid, and it's going to probably cost somewhere in the neighborhood of two hundred and eighty thousand dollars for us to outfit the remainder of our buses. Hopefully, with the bid process, we can get it down a little bit less than that.
Look, this was driven home to me, I think, two Fridays ago. We got a report of a student who did not get off at their bus stop. Fortunately, that student was on one of our buses with a camera. And we saw that that student got off the bus with another student at their stop. And we were able to identify that student and knew where that student went. And when we went to that location, we found the student. If that had been one of our buses without a camera, that, we'd still be looking.
All right. It's just one of the other measures to go along with our GPS system that is really, will increase the efficiency and the safety of the buses all the way around.
How many total buses do we have?
I'm sorry?
How many total buses do we have?
Got about a hundred and sixty-nine or seventy-something?
Actually, six hundred and sixty-five, I believe.
And we currently have photo, or cameras in around thirty?
Thirty-four.
And so we'll be adding around between thirty and forty?
We'll be add, we'll be adding, no, we'll be adding about a hundred and thirty-five.
We'll do the entire fleet.
We'll do, do.
Oh, a hundred and thirty-five buses?
Yes.
I thought you said a hundred and thirty-five cameras.
No, we have about thirty-four right now. We're going to buy an additional hundred and thirty-five or so cameras.
This will be.
We will outfit the whole yellow fleet.
The bus, the budget amendment will come out of a general, our general fund. It still keeps us within our our policy guidelines related to our general fund.
So the cameras we have right now, Mr. Han, won't have this, they don't provide the same as the newer cameras are going to be?
No, the ones we have do.
Do you have the four?
We've already migrated to the, we've tried these others in the past. We've always had some cameras on the buses, but never really adequate. We do have the four-camera system on our bus now, and that's what we will standardize to, so that we will have full coverage. So the ones that we have now are the four-camera systems on the buses.
Okay.
There's no way to add a fifth camera to people that run a stop arm where a license plate could be?
Well, the stop arm cameras, there are, we have a couple of those, and I think Mr. Nance is going to buy a couple more this year, right, Ken? All right. But they are much more expensive. They're about six thousand dollars each.
We'll just pay some kid up there with his cellphone in the front seat, take the picture.
Yeah. It would be, it would be nice. We only have ten buses provided to us through the state with the extended stop arm, and those are the ones that have the stop arm cameras, the, a couple of them have the stop arm cameras. And we'll continue to try to add to those as we, as we can financially.
How many instances do we have daily or weekly of people running the?
I don't have the exact number, but we can get that for you. We do have quite a few, though, many more than you than you would think. We just had one last week that ran the stop arm, and unfortunately, he hit the stop arm, but we did not have a camera on the bus. That particular one, but, and you probably saw the video of the one two weeks ago where the individual just drove right through the stop arm.
Did the highway patrol ever take care of that?
I'm sorry?
Did the highway patrol ever take care of that?
I don't know. We we turned it over to law enforcement. I haven't heard if any adjudication's been made at this point.
Oh, good, thank you.
Good.
Because for the benefit of the audience, it's, to me, it's, you know, we we really need to stress this. It's unbelievable that when these buses stop, you've all seen them, a stop arm comes, the stop sign comes out and flashes. That ought to be enough, but the state is experimenting, we have, what, ten buses?
Yes.
With a six-foot extension from that stop sign out even farther with another stop sign on it, which I think is larger than the other one. And it al, it also is flashing. And we have children getting on and off these buses. And would you believe people still go through those things? And it, that one is so, it's kind of low, they actually hit it.
Yes, it extends, it extends into the other lane, so.
Yeah.
That's the intent, so that it does impact.
It's unbelievable. I mean, it's just unbelievable that people would would do that. It's just unbelievable that you'd go through and hit two of them flashing, plus all the other lights that are flashing. And that one that that was recorded, they weren't going real fast. They just eased right on through, and it scraped in the side of their, top of their car. I don't know where they were, but they weren't paying attention. Thank you, Ms. Han. Any other questions that, Mr. Sheehan?
Just, I can understand, I mean, two hundred and eighty thousand dollars is a lot of money. And I would hate to approve, for the board to approve that kind of money and then us not be able to do some other things that, I guess, we just need assurance that fund balance is sufficient for this not to be an issue.
Yes, sir, it is. And we also want to point out that they were able to save more than this amount in their budget last year with some of the efficiencies that they were referencing. So basically, the program is paying for it with what they didn't spend last year that that fell into fund balance.
Okay.
Item nine, superintendent's report.
Just a couple of dates to put on your calendar. Thursday, eleven twelve will be a Gregory parent meeting related to our magnet school proposal. Wednesday, eleven eighteen.
Oh, what time?
It'll be in the evening. I think it's six o'clock, but I'll get you the, I'll get you.
At Gregory or at Forest Hill?
Yeah, the email will receive from six-thirty to seven.
Six-thirty, thank you. Same time then, the following week, Wednesday, eleven eighteen at Forest Hills.
Now, that one I have at six to seven, at Forest Hills.
All right, that's why, that's why I got the six.
That's the email, yeah.
And then we will do a phone survey on eleven nineteen, as sort of a follow-up.
Yeah, the twelve, the day of the twelve, that's the same, just FYI, that's the same time as the Aces' parent going. I will not be there.
Okay. So those are coming up, and I told you I'd get you those dates. That's it on the superintendent's report.
Any questions for the superintendent? Thank you. Item ten, under consensus items, item A, personnel, appendix F, Dr. Wellmers. Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Request the board approve personnel matters is presented.
Need for approval?
Yeah, second.
Comments, questions?
Just a question in general, Dr. Wellmers, what are you doing with this, this approval? What's what's going on with it? Don, let me ask it another way.
Okay.
You've got a lot of employees in there, you've got different dates, different actions. So really, what you're doing is cleaning up the books for the people that have left and reassigning people. Is that, is that right?
That's a pretty good descriptor, yes. Some of it is just a normal hire, and some of it is where we're, we've got folks that. And some of it is where we've got folks that were onboard that we couldn't get to you in the previous one because we were hiring 300. And so that got pushed today. So this is kind of clearing the decks in a way. Yes, sir. Good, good way to put it.
Any other questions? Oh, there's a favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Approved. Item B, budget amendments, appendix G, Mary Hazel's small.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I recommend the board's approval of the amendments as presented.
Move for approval?
Second.
Comments, questions? Oh, there's a favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, proposed, it's approved. Been asked to take a five-minute break, so at this time, we'll take our five-minute break.